All right, good evening. I'd like to call to order the Lakewood City Council Regular Meeting in Lakewood, Colorado on May 22, 2023. I'd like to welcome everybody. Thank you all for joining. This is going to be a great night of a lot of different things that are coming before our community, and certainly would like to welcome those who are engaging online. There'll be a couple of different opportunities for public comment throughout the night, and if you wish to speak and you're in chambers and you haven't had a chance to sign up, there's some signup sheets in the back. For those calling in tonight, the number is 720-707-2699, and the webinar ID as well as the phone ID is 870-1796-0123. You can press pound twice to get into the meeting. So with that, I'll ask the clerk to please call roll.
Paul.
Here.
Oliver.
Here.
Mia Guerrero.
Here.
Stewart.
She's absent.
Oh, Councilor Stewart's absent. Franks.
Here.
Strom.
Here.
Jansen.
Here.
Sharazai.
Here.
Springsteen.
Here.
Vincent.
Here.
Abel.
Here.
Mayor Paul, you have a quorum.
Great. I'd ask if you're able to stand, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance while we remain standing for a moment in silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Please be seated. All right, this body has a statement of conflict of interest, and if council's not clear on that, we can go ahead and clarify, but I think you've heard it numerous times. So if you have any personal, financial, or business interest this evening and need to be excused, please go ahead and do so. And then I'll ask the clerk to please read Item Five.
Item Five, Proclamation, Proclaiming Mental Health Month.
I'll ask Mayor Protem to please go ahead and read this.
Proclamation, May 2023, Mental Health Month. Whereas good mental health is essential to overall health and emotional well-being of all children, youth, adults, and families, and promotes a healthy community, and whereas one in five people in our communities experience a mental health condition each year, and whereas 16.5% of individuals in our communities experience substance use disorder each year, and whereas increased focus on the prevention of mental health conditions and substance use disorders among children and adolescents through screening and early intervention helps improve lives, and whereas the stigma against mental health conditions and substance use disorders prevents many people from accessing care, and whereas when mental health problems and substance use disorders are detected early and treated, people can recover and maintain a healthy and independent life, and whereas the city of Lakewood is dedicated to improving the health and well-being of its citizens by ending stigma and focusing on the integrated role of mental health in all of our lives, and whereas the city of Lakewood calls upon all citizens, government agencies, public, private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our communities and resources to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, providing appropriate and accessible services to all its citizens, and making mental health a priority. Now therefore, on behalf of the city of, of the city council and the people of the city of Lakewood, I, Adam Paul, Mayor of the city of Lakewood, Colorado, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Mental Health Month.
Great. Yeah, thank you. So our special guest, Ms. Sheeman, please, the mic is yours.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. On behalf of the clients, the staff, and the community around Jefferson Center, we thank you for this proclamation. Jefferson Center is a nonprofit community mental health center, and every day we provide mental health care and substance use treatment, wellness services, and a host of resources to folks in our community. And every year, we touch the lives of nearly 30,000 people. And we're committed to breaking down the barriers that prevent people from seeking care when they need it. And that means that we are not only in offices, but we're in community centers, homeless shelters, police departments, and other places in our community, schools where we can reach folks. And we certainly couldn't do this important work without our community partners, so thank you very much. The last few years have stretched all of us. A recent Pulse survey showed that 61% of Coloradans experienced mental health strains such as anxiety, depression, loneliness, and stress in the last year. And we know that that affects the way we care for our families, the way we experience relationships, work, school, et cetera. And that's why Mental Health Month is so important. Together, we can increase awareness, reduce the stigma that's often associated with mental health and substance use disorders. When stigma fades, we know more people will seek care, and our community will be stronger and healthier. And we so value the partnership of Lakewood in developing the Solid Ground Apartments, which will create 40 permanent supportive housing units right here in Lakewood, helping some of the most vulnerable in our community get back on their feet and connect with community-based care, treatment, and employment services. We truly value the support of the city of Lakewood, and thank you again for recognizing Mental Health Month in the city of Lakewood.
And I would just echo our thanks to the Jefferson Center for all that you do and the great partnerships and all that you provide, and we're anxious to see Solid Ground come out of the ground and start to serve the community. All right, next up is the point in the meeting where the public is invited to address the City Council on Items That Do Not Appear on the Agenda. All comments should be directed to the City Council. I ask that all in accordance observe the decorum of City Council chambers and refrain from applause or audible support or discord with the speaker. There's a three-minute limit per speaker. The indicator lights on this lectern will glow yellow after two and a half minutes and red when your time is up. There's also a countdown clock. I'll politely try to wrap you up if you go over. And for those who are calling in, when you have 30 seconds left, you'll hear, and then you will hear that again, indicating your opportunity to wrap it up. So again, this is for non-agenda items in general. So Mr. Mace, you're up first. And then Ms. Chappa is next. Mr. Mace, let's wait for a quick second so we can get your time started. All right, you're good.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. James Mace, Ward One. I'm up here again tonight because in the last two weeks, I had been pulled over by Lakewood's finest four times, three in the library parking lot, one at Alameda and Quail. I am highly sick of this. What are you guys trying to do? Get, you guys want me out of Lakewood again? Because that's what's going to happen. I'm quite tired of being feeling like I'm being forced out of Lakewood. And I have a question for Councilmember Springsteen. Mayor, I would like the opportunity to ask that question, if possible, because I am not going to ask it to people that are alive. May I ask my question, or no?
Certainly.
Councilmember Springsteen, do you know the time that Lakewood has, the Lakewood PD has on their body cameras to, before they have to release footage? And also, when I'm pulled over, Lakewood is not using their body cameras with me, and I want to know why. Can somebody answer my question, please?
So we'll certainly have somebody to get back to you, Mr. Mace.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. Ms. Chappa? And then, can't read the next name, but the phone number ends in 0076. Good evening, welcome. We'll get your time restarted here. You're good to go.
Okay. Hello, Mayor Paul. Hello, City Council members. My name is Polaris Chappa, and I'm here representing Congresswoman Brittany Patterson's office. I just wanted to introduce myself and also let you know about the services that we have for community members in CD7. We wanted to let the community know that if they have any issues with federal agencies, such as getting your passport, Veterans Services, Social Security, Social Security, or Medicare, or even IRS issues, we are there to help them. We also have a grants program. We're trying, we're working with community organizations and municipalities and localities and trying to match them with federal funding that might be aligned with what the work that they are doing. There's so much, so much funding coming down the line that we really want to be able to offer as much help as we can and help and support to these communities. So that's really it. I just wanted to thank you for letting me introduce myself and also to offer, is it okay if I give my number?
Please.
Okay.
It's up to you.
Yeah. So if anyone needs any help with any federal agencies, we're here to help. Our phone number is 303-274-7944. That's 303-274-7944. Thank you, and hopefully we can help.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming out. And your offices are right across the street?
We are right across the street, 550 South Wadsworth.
Yep, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just a reminder by some of these names, this is general public comment. I think you might want to talk at some of these resolutions, but if you do want to talk under general, that's fine, too. But I do have this, or the last four, the last three, did four digits is 0509, I'm sorry, 0509. And forgive me if you just give us your name when you come down. And then Mr. Georgopoulos, are you general public comment or on the grants program? Probably, okay, great. So you'll be next.
Hi. My name is Leslie Klain, and I am the Executive Director for Gigi's Playhouse Denver, and we are located on Garrison and Sixth. And thank you, Jesslyn, so much for coming to the recent fundraising event that we have. I'm here this evening to say thank you. This, this, it's my sole purpose to say thank you so much for the grant funding that you, I hope, will vote for this evening in support of the programs and services that we, excuse me, offer free to our communities. So Gigi's Playhouse Denver is a Down Syndrome Achievement Center. We are one of 57-plus across the country as well as internationally. We serve those who have Down Syndrome as well as intellectual developmental disabilities. And the offer that we have is that we give them one-on-one speech and literacy. We're looking to grow and advance into math and nutritional classes, but all that we offer is complimentary, it's free. We are looking to branch out into the multicultural diversity so that we can speak to our other communities as well. But it is a really fun playhouse. I invite and encourage anyone here to please come and take a tour. It's welcoming, and what you see at our playhouse is what you see across the country. Gigi is a young woman who was born with Down Syndrome, and her mother Nancy Giovanni, Giovanni had, did not receive, actually, a warm and welcoming birth of her daughter, but was confronted with a diagnosis that her daughter has Down Syndrome, and decided that she wanted to change globally, the way that people looked at Down Syndrome. People with Down Syndrome have an extra 21st chromosome, but they also have a little extra to them that makes them more special. They are still capable of living a good, quality life. They are still able to have a job and to work and to serve and to have fun and enjoy their life, and we're here to make certain that they get that. So the grant that we put before you, that I hope that you vote and approve for tonight, we will put to good use to those that we serve in the communities. And again, if you'd like to come and take a tour, please see your funds at work. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So just as a reminder, for the grant programs, if you sign up to speak for those, we'll get back to those under separate resolutions. So I know Hands, you're, I think, up for one as well. So if you want me, I'll come back to that. This is just general public comment for anything that's not on our agenda, which is fine. So Mr. Georgopoulos, do you want to speak about Hands, the carpenter?
Okay, we'll wait.
Ms. Moore, I'm sure you want to speak about Jeff Coates.
Okay.
Ms. Fisher? Hello, do you want to speak about grants? Yes, I thought so. Louise Gonzalez? Oh, yeah. Hello, my friend. So we'll come back. Mr. Derry? Grants? Here we go. Pam? Certainly no. I think you want to speak about grants. And Ms. Poston, you probably want to speak about something else. Come on down. So anybody else in chambers that wants to speak under general, please come see the clerk. And if you are online and you wish to join this portion of the meeting, please go ahead and press star nine. All right, your time is going.
Hello, I'm Joan Poston, and I'm from unincorporated Jefferson County. And I'm here to give you an update on the FOIA that I filed in September of 2022. I think the last time you saw what I had received, you saw that it was heavily redacted. And so I'm in the process of appealing the redaction and getting what's underneath, all those black, black spaces, revealed. I have a case that's been opened with the National Archives, and they have until the end of this month to get back to me on it. That's what's going on with the FOIA. I also was down at the legislature, and I'm very sad to say that the bill that threw out or suppresses all of our ordinances for our, how we develop our neighborhoods, was passed, so no longer do we get to express our things with our SGI ordinance, because the state has said that we can't do that. And I am very disappointed in this legislature that they decided that it was okay to do that. Which brings me to what I've been doing lately. This past weekend, I've locked 70 houses in my neighborhood, knocked doors, and we're in the process of having a meeting, a neighborhood meeting, which a lot of people are very interested in, in how to protest our property assessments. I don't know if you all received your property assessments, and I'm not sure if any of your constituents have been talking to you about the property assessments and what they can do. But there is things they can do. It was in the Denver Post this past weekend, which kind of shows you how much people are interested in this. The other thing that we need to understand is because these property taxes are going up, and our taxes are going up, a lot of people are looking very carefully at what they are getting for their taxes. So please do not allow the Jefferson County School Board to put any illegal aliens into the closed elementary schools. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, not seeing any. I will close general public comment and would just make one comment in regards to House Bill 1255, which did pass and will either become law, I believe, on August 8th, unless it's signed by the governor sooner. That's something the City Council will be having to engage with in the next few weeks or a month or so, in a conversation with our legal team about what that means for the city of Lakewood. So look for that here in the future. All right, will the clerk please read Item Seven?
Item Seven, Resolution 2023-28, Approving the Imagine Tomorrow Arts, Parks, and Recreation Master Plan and Setting Goals, Strategies, and Actions for the Next 10 Years.
Okay, open the public hearing on Resolution 2023-28. Nobody has indicated that they want to speak on this. And it looks like we do have a presentation. All right. Mr. Goldstein, would you like to introduce our guests?
I'll turn it over to Director Newland.
Thank you.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, Mayor and Council. I am extremely pleased to be with you all here tonight to present the Imagine Tomorrow Master Plan for the Department. My name is Kit Newland. I'm the Director of Community Resources. And our plan that we're presenting to you is Imagine Tomorrow Arts, Parks, and Recreation for All, not parts, but parks, arts, parks, and recreation for all. Early in 2022, the department hired the firm Logan Simpson to guide our comprehensive planning effort. This plan will serve as the department's guiding framework for providing high-quality arts, parks, and recreation for the next 10 years. Our previous master plan, Imagine Lakewood, was completed in 2017. The city has experienced a lot of changes since then, including infill development at higher densities, housing challenges, a diversing, diversifying population, and new trends in the ways residents use our programs, services, and facilities. These factors contributed to the need to update our 2017 master plan to reflect the community's current preferences, desires, and priorities. I'd like to send a huge thank you out to all the thousands of residents who participated in this important planning effort, and a special shout out to those who participated as a part of our advisory committee. And if I could just take a second and see, I think we have some people here from the advisory group. Do we have, I thought we, I thought I saw some folks. Okay. Anyway, a huge thank you to those who served as our advisory committee, also to the many staff and stakeholders who gave meaningful and thoughtful feedback throughout this planning process. This plan positions the department for continued success, success with prioritized recommendations through the lens of public health and equity. So without further ado, let me introduce our presenters. From Logan Simpson, we have Christina Cartcher. She's a senior planner. And then from the CR Department, we have our Engagement Operations Manager, Amber Till. And I think Christina will be speaking first.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Kit. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council for having me here tonight. Again, my name is Christina. I cater with Logan Simpson. I helped guide this process over the last 14 months. It's been a great time working with Kit and Amber and the rest of the Community Resources staff. Throughout the 14-month process, we had an in-depth public outreach and community engagement process that was paired with in-depth analysis that went through these four phases. And it really created a defensible plan that's grounded in the public, but also data. You can see here, the main four phases are also sort of how we organize the plan around foundation, the needs with the, those documents around the statistically valid survey and a market trends analysis. And then we came up with the recommendations. The plan is a short, concise, easily to read, and pretty glassy-looking plan. You can put it on your coffee table at home, Mr. Mayor, I hope. And And, but then the rest of the document is paired with appendices that will outline all of those background information and detailed analysis that we did. Throughout the public outreach process, we really meant to have purposeful and varied and sincere public outreach. If we didn't catch people in the statistically valid survey, we caught them at an open house event or at Rock the Block. And so we got out to a lot of different events and different surveys. And this way, we really created a support for the plan and champions around the implementation. And we got ahead of the community in addressing what they needed really early, which shaped the rest of the plan. Opportunities throughout that 14-month process were used to reach out to leaders, advocates and the advisory committee, the general public, to grab information. Most of our public events, as well as our online virtual meeting that we had early in the process during the pandemic, offered Spanish translation as well. All of the public outreach gave us some key themes. These key themes turned into what the core services are for the Community Resources Department now. And then those became the plan goals and strategies. The main thing that we heard from the public was self-directed trails and park and recreation activities that are inclusive for all ages and abilities across the entire system. Mainly, we also heard that maintenance and supporting of existing facilities and maintaining opportunities to have the staff to upkeep those facilities was also very high on the list. We heard number, 88% of the survey supported existing infrastructure. We also heard the addition, the need for additional staff and resources to add more programs and more amenities to the system. So speaking of that survey, early in the process, so about a year ago, in the spring of 22, 2022, we had a statistically valid survey that validated these themes that we've been hearing. We heard it from almost 500 people at the 95% confidence level. And, or sorry, we heard from almost 500 households, not necessarily people, that represented all those households. So that means that the department can be confident that our recommendations that came out of the plan, it was driven by broad community input and not necessarily skewed by specific user groups. Here you can see the top level for facilities and programs. Again, these are supported by the core services and those themes that we've heard. So nature trails, green spaces, as well as adult fitness and wellness programs. One of the other in-depth analysis that we did was an equity analysis. So this looked at investment across the community to how we can equally invest in arts, parks, recreation and programming across the community. It had three factors. One was the number of acres of parks and open space per thousand residents in each of the wards. Then we had walkability, which really focused on safe access. So if you have a trail, a bike lane, a sidewalk, especially a crosswalk, that highlighted safe areas. And then the equity analysis highlighted the greatest need for additional connections for safety. And then the social vulnerability index, use the CDC, the Centers for Disease Control and their metrics to emphasize where health, wellness, mental health, those types of things are needed to be equitable across the community. So the greatest need is in that darker red and that lesser need is in the yellow. And you will notice the CDC especially, it only applies to residential areas where there's actually people living. So you can see sort of gaps where there's the Federal Center or open space in this. So really focused on the residential part of your community.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening, thank you Christina.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Let me get this a little bit higher. So Christina talked a little bit about our core services already. We wanted to start with thinking a little bit more about that needs assessment. So all of the public engagement, the pop-up events, the surveys that were taken, both online and statistically valid. The planning team also did an equity analysis, a benchmark communities analysis against other municipalities, and studied market trends, a market trends report. We took all of that information together to help us develop those core services. It prompted us to define the services, which then also led to our goals and strategies, which really became the overarching plan framework for the recommendations of this planning effort. Christina talked about core services, but let's, let's talk a little bit more about what are core services. These, these are the services that the community expects our department to deliver. They're the services that are most important, what we heard through this planning effort, are most important to Lakewood residents. We want to make sure that we're filling any unmet need or any gap in the community. So you can see the, the list of services provided here are where we landed through vetting this with our needs assessment with the community. There, there may be private entities or other public entities in Lakewood that serve other purposes, but this was where we wanted to direct our department, our department to its core, making sure that we're providing these amenities for Lakewood residents. And then that led us into the plan goals. There are six overarching goals of Imagine Tomorrow. You can see them listed on the screen. These goals are intended to really chart the course for the next 10 years of arts, parks and recreation in Lakewood. Each goal has a strategy built into the plan document as well as achievable action steps that you can find in Appendix I. Again, they were vetted through several public meetings and the needs assessment. What's great about the action plans set forth in Appendix I is that we don't want this plan to sit on a shelf. We don't want it to sit on the mayor's coffee table and gather dust. We, we want it to be actionable and implementable. So it's broken down by timeframe for completion and is very achievable to make sure that we continue momentum and that that plan is something that we can put forth and make progress in Lakewood. We had a similar process for Imagine Lakewood, which Kit mentioned earlier, that helped us achieve 85% of those Imagine Lakewood plan goals from 2017. So when it comes to implementation, this plan was our department's first effort of really doing a deep dive into total system cost. What does it cost to provide arts, parks and recreation in Lakewood? And along with those costs, what are we missing? What did we hear through this planning effort that is important to the community that we maybe hadn't considered? So when thinking about implementation of the plan, we have to consider our current operations and maintenance as well as capital improvements, which could include lifecycle replacement, updates and new amenities that we've already accounted for, and also new construction or fun opportunities that came up through this planning effort. We did hire a second consultant to help us with identifying lifecycle replacement needs across city facilities. And that was a way for us to really understand from a CR perspective, what is our total system cost of doing business in Lakewood. When it comes to implementing the plan, we, we closely study economic conditions. We thought about revenue and expenditure projections. The department will have to make strategic choices because this plan is going to be all about balance. We know, council knows that funding is limited, but we want to make sure that we're doing the best we can now by prioritizing our existing assets to support those lifecycle replacement needs, but also looking for opportunities to be efficient and to be able to have those quick wins and those new amenities that we can present to the community and take of and, take care of in the future. There are also two very important plan recommendations that you will see within the draft plan. The first is to, this year, complete a study of the city's parkland dedication ordinance. That would be an opportunity for us to, to find ways to support arts, parks and recreation in Lakewood. And then the plan also, as we've talked about briefly, recommends a citywide funding strategy so that we can find opportunities to support parks and rec. That being said, Imagine Tomorrow is aspirational. We wanted it to be visionary, we want it to be achievable, but we also wanted to dream big and think about opportunities for the future in Lakewood and how we can support our residents and their well-being. One final thank you to our advisor committee members and the Lakewood residents that supported this planning effort. We were, we were so thankful that you gave your time on evenings and weekends to come and visit with us and we're really impressed with the participation in this planning effort. So thank you again for everyone who was involved. With that being said, we can take questions back over to Mayor.
Great, thank you so much. A lot of great work and love the "don't stop dreaming." Yeah, we'll take questions on this one before we go into a motion. So I'll start with Counselor Shara Zai.
Yes, thank you. Question and comment. I appreciated the emphasis, one of the first goals about hiring. I mean, I applaud dreaming big, but if we don't have the bodies to implement it. So there seems to be a concrete plan on that path forward. I wanted to better understand how this dovetails with the comprehensive plan that we're getting ready to start and if you could just share a little bit about that overlap.
Sure, I would be happy to, Counselor. So the Imagine Lakewood Master Plan was a component of the comprehensive planning effort. So what happens is every quarter or at least semi-annual, we look at our goals that came from Imagine Lakewood and wrapped up into the comprehensive plan and we track our progress. And then we roll that progress into the budget document that all of you are familiar with. We would do the same thing here. We will take these, those goals and opportunities that came forth from Imagine Tomorrow, feed them right into the comprehensive plan where they are appropriate and then track them accordingly. We also will be involved in the, in the planning effort as planning looks to start that process.
Counselor Abel.
Thank you. One of my concerns is the replenishment of park properties. We have a fee that we charge, or we have requirements for property to be donated for parks and new developments. However, we allow developers to opt out of that and pay fees in lieu. Then we wind up with money, but no ground to buy. The developers already have their service area and the ground that, that folks live on. And we don't have places for their kids to play. We don't have nearby places for them to walk their pets and for them, for people just to get out and enjoy the fresh air. I don't see anything in this plan that addresses that issue. Am I missing something?
You, you are not. We recognize the value of what you're saying and, and we got probably four or five months into the planning effort and realized that we likely needed to do a more comprehensive study just for parkland dedication. How, how, what is best practice? How could we tailor that ordinance to Lakewood? Because Lakewood is unique, as all of you know, so that we can better serve with, with those opportunities Lakewood residents. So that study, we are working on the RFI right now. We would hire a consultant to do a deeper study into parkland dedication specifically, as well as any other fee opportunities that could support parks and recreation. Some of those funding strategies are included in the draft plan.
When might that get underway?
We, it is in purchasing, under review right now, the actual RFI. We need to have it in progress before the end of the year. So I would imagine we would be getting started in late summer, early fall.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Springsteen, then Counselor Benson.
So in going through the documents that you've presented, one of my questions on the equity analysis is essentially, what were your findings? What were your findings for our wards? I don't think that you've reported on that tonight. In my particular ward, we have a very high Hispanic population and I, I can't help but notice, for instance, that at Lasley Park, the, the tennis court has sat unfinished for a year or more. And so that's part of my question is, what did you look at in the equity analysis? Did you look at race? Did you look at income level? Did you look at the amount of parkland and how that has been cared for and distributed? I think it's interesting how the neighborhood participation grants are chosen and I'd love to know more about how that works. But I think the most interesting thing you said was, you don't want things to sit on the mayor's coffee table and not get implemented. And I would agree with that. The fact that you're saying that says to me that it has been in the past. And so I would like to know more about that and I would like to know about this equity analysis, especially as pertains to Ward Three. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. I will let Christina address the equity analysis details, if you don't mind, but I will add that the equity analysis as a mapping tool is available on LakewoodTogether.org. You can drill down to very specific areas once you're using that tool. We just gave a general overview in the presentation tonight. There is also a Lakewood Speaks presentation that provides, it's a longer presentation, 17 minutes or so. So that provides you more detail if you would rather listen to it rather than drill down online. We can talk about the youth program grants later tonight, that, that is coming up. But I'll let Christina address the equity piece real, real quick. Great, thanks. Yeah, we looked at, in the equity analysis, the parkland per thousand residents and wards. So parkland is, per resident is a typical metric that we use across all communities to benchmark against other communities. You can do parks per acre, parks per, or parks per thousand resident. You could do schools per thousand residents, you can do trails per thousand residents. And you can look at all those different metrics. But we looked at parks and so we divided up into each of the wards and that was one layer. So we use a GIS, geographic information systems on mapping tool online to layer these different analyses together. The second analysis was around the Center for Disease Control, Social Voluntary Index. Can't say that word tonight. And that has, I'd have to pull up the whole list to remind myself, but it's, it looks at diabetes, heart risk, heart disease risk, mental health, and all of these different disparities in, in health, as well as, as well as income is in there as well. And so that was the third one. And that's a analysis and a very detailed analysis that we had already modeled, or the CDC has already modeled, that we added to our third leg. And then the second one was around walkability. And so we took your trail system, your sidewalk system. It's really great that you had mapped sidewalks, all of the crosswalks. And so we identified where those were lacking. So if you weren't in a 15-minute walk on a safe access via a trail, a sidewalk, you couldn't cross, you know, Wadsworth without a, without a, without a crosswalk, your area was identified, or that, that intersection, for example, was identified as lacking. So it needed that. So all of these layers landed on the map together and that darker area on that map shows where the most need is. So what we concluded from that is, you know, as this plan is implemented, when those future park needs are identified, to focus in on those areas of the highest need, either improving parks in those areas or trying to find smaller parks or trying to find different ways to provide programming in that area. So as the plan is implemented and, you know, budgets are reviewed every year, that will be one of the focus to look at that map. And Counselor, I think your, your last question was implementation. Kit mentioned earlier on in our presentation, Imagine Lakewood, we've, we have achieved 85% of those plan goals. We've also had several parkland acquisitions related directly to equity and park spaces. So we would take that same approach with Imagine Tomorrow. We, we have a several-page action plan and we would continue to pursue acquisitions as they become available.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes, thank you. That map that you show, I represent the dark area, which I know you know, which is supported both by the lack of and also the diversity equity census data that shows that we have the lowest average income, the least amount of parks, the highest Hispanic or, and area. So, and trying to get input sometimes from those people, if you've probably noticed, sometimes your apartment dwellers or those people who are in affordable housing just do not feel comfortable giving, giving input. And one of the promises that was made, we've taken on a lot of the housing. There's a lot, as you've seen, going on in Wadsworth, very many places. It was told to those people that we would get that money that developers didn't It was told to those people that we would get that money that developers did not ta, or, you know, that gave back into the fund, did not donate the parkland, would stay where that development was. That's starting to become a question, both from developers who have given the money, as well as citizens around wondering, where is the money? How much is the money? Where is it being spent? And how is it divided in those wards or those places where, and I see somebody coming up probably to answer that question. So, I'd like more information because I really need to get back with folks concerning that.
Absolutely. We can, we have a report that we can provide to you, we'll provide to all of City Council about where those funds have been spent. And we recognize that we aren't always able to get them back to work as quickly as we would like to. But, but we'll, I promise you, we'll, we'll get you a report in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, I appreciate that very much.
You bet.
Because it's bubbling up the higher the apartments go.
I understand.
And the closer to the road.
And I think that's the same thing in Ward One.
Probably so. Thank you.
Counselor Abel.
We are the darkest. We have less park space than any other ward.
I don't want you two to get into a fight over there.
But, Kit, just real quick, in general, though, we do have the districts that they do stay in, right?
Yeah.
So, when those, and, and I think council did change, I don't know, within the last few years, some of it on large, large pieces of property that we take.
15 acres or more.
15, we take donation, but, so, smaller ones, and it can also get tricky because you might not have land to give or not meaningful land for the city. So, those dollars are important, but it's about how we redeploy them.
Right, absolutely. That's correct.
Great.
But that's part of why we wanted, as Amber mentioned, we want to do an updated study, because it's really difficult in a city like ours where there's nowhere to go, grow, but up, to figure out how to do that land dedication, parkland actually, well, to do it really well.
Super smart, okay. All right, I'm going to ask for a motion on this, please. I think it's 22.
Mayor Paul. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2023-28.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All right, seeing none, please cast your votes. Counselor Springsteen, could you cast your vote, please? Okay, and that passes, looks like somebody's not locked out. Could you lock out Counselor Stewart, please? He's got a locker. Okay, thank you. That passes AIs to nays, the nays being Oliver and Springsteen. Very well done, thank you so much. Look forward to seeing this come to fruition here in the future. Okay, well, the clerk, please read item eight.
Item eight, Resolution 2023-29, Establishing Projects and Project Funding Levels for the 2023 Capital Improvement and Preservation Program, CIPP Neighborhood Participation Program.
All right, and for all of our grant folks, we got to get through this, and then we'll be into our grants, so. I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2023-29. Nobody has signed up to speak on item eight. Anybody in chambers? All right, seeing none and nobody online, I'll go ahead and close public comment. And Mr. Ben, Mr. Goldstein, would you introduce our guest, please?
We'll turn it over to Roger Waddell.
Mr. Waddell, welcome. Good evening.
Thank you, Roger Waddell, Comprehensive Planning Manager, Lakewood, and Kristy Ivanoff in Comprehensive Planning will also be involved in the presentation. This is the 2023 Neighborhood Participation Program. It's an annual program that, and I'll get into the details, but basically, covers smaller projects that don't really fit into the capital improvement program, and they are capital-type projects. See, to give you an overview, it's, oops, guess I get to do this. Okay, I'll just give you what we'll be talking about in, in our relatively brief presentation. We'll give you a little background on the program itself, and again, it's, it's been here since, for about 30 years now. Talk about selection process and criteria, and then go over some past projects and the status of some past projects that are either finished or under construction, and then recommendations for the 2023 program. Again, as I mentioned in the introduction, it's really to build small neighborhood projects that don't fit in the capital improvement program. They may fit, but they're small, and, and it's, it's more maybe efficient and maybe more, more of an open process to, to find projects that are meaningful to the neighborhoods and are relatively easy to construct, although some get a little more complicated than others. They need to be, it's an annual program that's open, there's like a three-month period where neighborhoods can apply, and they need to be, the projects need to be requested by a neighborhood group, that could be a registered neighborhood organization, or it could be a group of neighbors that are just interested in a specific project. And we've received projects over the years in, kind of in both categories, so it's, it's really fairly open, but it, it does need to come from a neighborhood group, not necessarily one individual. Again, began in 1992, and there have been, over that time, 161 projects funded. Every year is a little bit different, don't get equal distribution every year within the, within the city. Geographically, over time, it, it does even out, but there's 161 projects. Currently, the budget is $160,000 for construction, and there's an additional $20,000 for project contingencies, design work sometimes, not too common, but sometimes the consulting or firm needs to help with the design. And also, there are contingencies because we go on initial estimates, but things can be, can change over time when we have more realistic numbers, and things come up during construction, as they always do. Here are the basic project requirements, and these project requirements have been adopted by council in resolution. A project must be on public property, that would be city property, it could be school property, but it has to be public property. The project must have a general benefit to an entire neighborhood and not, you know, just benefit one property owner with a sidewalk connection or something like that, so it needs to be demonstrated that it's, it's a benefit to the entire neighborhood. Maintenance is an issue, and it's one of the factors. The project must not significantly increase maintenance requirements because the city maintains the projects once they are completed. You don't want to put an additional burden on maintenance. Funding levels for per project are limited to $60,000 per project, and it's really to allow for several projects to be approved and, and built in a, in a year, not just put it all in one project. And again, mentioned, not in the current capital improvement and preservation program. It's a competitive process, so the community, we have a standard application with, the community describes the project, puts a preliminary budget, and sometimes we have to take a closer look at that, but it's competitive. Every year, since I've been working on it, we've had more, significantly more applications when you add up the dollars than the project budget. I don't think there's ever been a year that I can recall that that hasn't happened. So, projects are scored, we have an interdepartmental staff team from planning, community resources, public works, which all have kind of different perspectives on things, based on some weighted criteria that I'll get to in a second here. And then, the projects are ranked, and recommendations are presented to City Council, which is why, what we're, why we're here tonight. So, the selection criteria, and they are weighted, they're not all necessarily equal, are benefit versus cost, kind of think of, in building a project, you know, how many in, in general terms in the community will benefit versus the cost of the project? Does it address health and safety? Not all projects, you could say specifically do, but sometimes there's a drainage project or maybe a sidewalk connection that can improve health and safety. Certainly, landscaping is, is also, can perceived as health and safety in terms of green space and, and that sort of thing. Compliance with city, adopted city plans, community resources plan, the city's comprehensive plan, and we have some other community plans that may apply. Neighborhood support is important, and I, and looking at neighborhood support, we always look at where that support is coming from. Is it, you know, a lot of times, well, we get signatures, but are those signatures people that live in the area or just, you know, a lot of signatures from outside of the, the direct benefit area? So, neighborhood support is important, and typically, there's a minimum of five signatures, and also, the affected properties are looked at, too. If, for example, there's a sidewalk, a section of a sidewalk, and there's three properties that are, you know, right there, we want to make sure that the properties that are directly affected are supportive. And then, maintenance requirements, as I, as I mentioned before, it's not the major issue, but it's also taken in consideration in terms of ranking the projects. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kristy to talk about status of previous projects and recommendations.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. I'm Kristy Ivanoff. I'm a planner within the Comprehensive Planning Division, and as Roger mentioned, I will now share status details for past projects, as well as the recommendations for this year's program. So, to begin with the previous projects, the, the project up here shown on the slide is the Belmar Community Connection Landscaping. This was a project from 2021. They requested funding for landscaping improvements, and the project has been completed. The, the slide here shows images from, that are recent, and it shows the landscaping that has been completed. The Weir-Golch-Wadsworth Underpass Improvement Project, this was a project from last year in 2022. They requested funding for lighting in the tunnel. This project has been completed, and this slide shows before and after photos. Another project from last year in 2022, the Slater Garden Outdoor Garden Seating. This project is anticipated to be completed this summer. The Mole Home, I guess I could bring this down a little bit, a little shorter. The Mole Home Basketball Court Project from last year requested funding to resurface the basketball court. Unfortunately, with Mole Home Elementary School closing, this project is no longer viable and will not be implemented. So, now on to the recommendations for this year. We received 14 applications, and six of them are being recommended tonight. The, the total is just over $154,000 in estimated construction costs. This slide shows a map of all 14 project applications. The recommended projects are highlighted in blue. So, on the next couple of slides, I will provide a little bit more detail for each recommended project. The first project, Creighton Middle School Outdoor Improvement for Health and Wellness of Students, requests funding to resurface their multi-use courts. The next recommended project requests funding for a gateway sculpture installation as part of the Lakewood West Colfax Safety Project. The third recommended project requests funding for water fountains in Wa, in Washington Heights Park and Oakane Park, and the water fountains will include a water bottle fill station and a dog bowl. The fourth and fifth recommended projects request funding for grills and game tables at Meadowlark Park. And the sixth and final recommended project requests funding for a Gaga Ball Pit at Carmody Park. I've never played it, so I can't actually personally describe it, but the, there's an image on the slide here that kind of shows the structure, and then there's people inside, and there's a ball involved, but that's all I know.
It's, you can watch an episode of Bob's Burgers about it for reference.
It seems to be very popular.
Yes.
Latest kind of popular activity.
So, here is a slide that shows the summary, a list of all six recommended projects with the estimate, estimated cost of each. So, the action requested is for City Council to approve the resolution to adopt the projects recommended for funding in the 2023 Neighborhood Participation Program. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion, and we'll go into questions or comments.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2023-29.
Second.
Okay, so, and just to reiterate, so this is essentially a council-instituted program, so I, I know throughout the years, if they want to be things that change or more dollars associated with it, that's something council could certainly have during the, the budget conversation. Also, I think it's important to note for projects that aren't funded, city staff is always willing to help, sit back down with them and try to redesign those so they're more successful in the future. And one quick thing, this is just a personal note, I often wondered why the Weir-Golch Underpass, it always looked like it wasn't finished, but that's because there's an area in there for horse, horses to go through still, so it's not all concrete, but there's a dirt area to make sure that the horses can still go under Wadsworth, which I thought was kind of a cool thing. So, are there any questions or comments? Okay, Counselor Springsteen.
So, one of the things I've always wondered about this is, who, who actually decides? Ho, how are, how is the group of people who decide which projects to fund selected? And how many people are there, and who are they? So, I would ask that about this year. And then, I feel like this is something that a lot of people aren't aware of in our community, particularly pe, people of color in our community. And so, I'm wondering about how many, we've been talking about inclusivity and, you know, all of that. What have we done to outreach to the community besides just the very privileged in our community? There might be things that wouldn't even come on our radar, like what jumps to mind is I know Counselor Royball did some things to, to get rid of graffiti, for instance. So, I'm just wondering about that. What do we do to outreach to that part of our community on this particular grant? And then, um, let's see. Oh, and then, another question I had, and I'm not complaining about things that go to the schools, but I'm just curious why we would be funding things that might fall within the, in the Jefferson County School District, for instance? And I think it's too bad that the basketball thing didn't get funded, because I'm sure there's a lot of kids who want to play basketball, even though that school went away. So, um, those are just some of my questions. Thanks.
Okay, I can start. In terms of who decides, well, council decides. Staff can only make recommendations, and, you know, we get a lot of variety in projects, so. recommendations, and, you know, we get a lot of variety in projects. So early on in the process, you know, we have to have some method of evaluating all the projects. And I kind of went over the major categories, and, you know, how they affect the community and how they affect the organization in terms of maintenance and that sort of thing. So there are criteria. There's an interdepartment team, as I mentioned, of staff members from, you know, Public Works, Community Resources, and Planning. So it's done to try to find an equitable, nothing is ever a perfect way of evaluating projects, but this has been the method that's been used over the past several years, and it seems to be fairly effective. So that's who decides. And in terms of projects, I'll jump to the school question. Certainly, there are projects proposed on school property. They are, again, this is an open process. Any neighborhood group can apply for projects. So typically, it's not the school district that applies, but it's a neighborhood organization that applies, or a group of neighborhoods, neighborhood residents that apply for a project on school property. And what we do require is acknowledgement from the school district or the principal that it fits on the property. But it doesn't come from the school district. It comes from, the projects come from the community. And as far as advertising the program, certainly that's a challenge, you know, for all projects. As you heard from Community Resources for planning, we have a conference and plan coming up. We certainly, we send, for this project, we have a very large period of where applicants can apply. It's about three months. And we do the traditional, you know, put it on the city website, we do notifications, we send information to every neighborhood, registered neighborhood organizations, because those are the ones that we can communicate with, and do the best we can in putting it in, looking at Lakewood and all, you know, publications that are possible. And again, this is a relatively modest, in the scheme of things, $160,000 is a lot of dollars, of course, but the city has a lot of programs. The staff does their best in terms of publicizing this as much as possible and having a lengthy application period. And certainly, any, and we receive a lot of questions, too, you know, like, is this a good application? How can we make our application better? And Kristi's done a lot of kind of not talking them through the application, but giving them the kind of the background so that they can have the best application possible. I don't know if Kristi, or is there anything else I missed?
Can you tell me specifically who on staff decided this year who gets the grants specifically?
If you have, if not, it's, I mean, we can get that information back to you, but the recommendation-
No, I'd like to know how many people on staff and who specifically decided who gets the grants this year.
Great. And if we can answer that, that's great. If not, we can get back to you.
No, I want to know tonight before I vote, who decided?
Mr. Goldstein.
That's not hard.
Well, certainly, and these questions could certainly be handled before tonight if they're not able to answer it.
Well, tonight is the night in front of the public.
Okay, so, Mr. Goldstein, it's council's decision tonight.
Or they could delay it.
No, 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 no. I want to know who on staff is recommending these grants. That's what I want to know.
So I think there's representatives from different departments, and I would also say-
I want to know specifically who and how many.
So, Counselor, we can get back to you with that.
No, I want to know before I make the vote.
So I'm going to go to Mayor Protem Strom.
Don't mute me. I want to know the answer to that.
The floor is not yours anymore. It's going to be-
It is, because my question has not been answered. Please, no, Mayor.
It's not going to be answered tonight.
Every time you do this, you're hiding something. What are we hiding? What are we hiding?
Oh, my goodness. A pretty cool program for our community that you could, that you could have the ability to share with your constituents that this program exists also.
Allow, allow.
I'm going to go to Mayor Protem, or I'm going to take a break from the meeting.
Point of order, point of order.
Point of order. I'm going to go ahead and go to Mayor Protem Strom. Her light is on.
Point of order. You have to acknowledge a point of order. There has to be a vote on that.
Okay. Mayor Protem, you have the floor.
You have to acknowledge a point of order. What are you hiding?
Go ahead.
I wanted to make a point, actually, Counselor Springsteen, to your question. I, years ago, was part of a neighborhood group that actually did apply for the MPP, and this is specifically to your question about the school property. Ours was the same. And with that, the reason that we applied for the MPP was actually that it was a playground that was for use by both very much the neighborhood as well as the school district. So it ended up being a jointly funded project to revitalize this playground, but it was, the city was very specific about making sure that that playground had, was accessible to the neighborhood on off-school hours. So I thought that might help.
That's wonderful, but I asked for a point of order. We have to have a vote under Robert's rules, Mayor.
Counselor, what's your point of, what's your point of order?
That I have not had my question answered, and we can have a vote as to whether I can have my question answered.
So I'm going to rule that that's not the case on your point of order.
No, you can't do that, Mayor. That is a vote of council.
Counselor, you had, you had an opportunity to bring this up prior to tonight. The information is not here. It will be given to you.
No, 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 no. This is a Robert's Rules issue. Please, please have the vote that I have requested.
All right. I took in your point of order. I acknowledged it. Counselor Shara Zai has the floor.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, too, that in the staff memo, all of the applications are listed. Is that correct? So we could make a decision tonight. There's not been a decision made by staff. All applications are here for us to review if there's something that council wanted to move from the waitlist up to funding. I think that, I just want to understand, is that in the realm of possibility?
Again, it is council's decision, so that, that isn't the realm of possibility to answer your question.
And the staff memo, this listing, the rating that you all have, that's the exercise that staff took. So you all have rated it and determined some are ineligible, some need to be waitlisted, but all of that is here for us to make that determination.
Exactly. It is a staff exercise. I mean, we have to look at a cost, take a closer look at cost, take a look at, you know, maintenance issues and that sort of thing. But it's, like I say, a staff exercise to evaluate and essentially rank the project, but not, and come with recommendations. But again, it's council's decision.
And you shared with us tonight what those sort of metrics are that you use for that rating system. Okay, thank you.
A point of order may be raised if the rules appear to have been broken. This may interrupt a speaker during debate or anything else if a breach of the rules warrants it. The point is resolved before business continues. The point of order calls upon the chair to make a ruling. We need to have-
So, Counselor, I think I made a ruling. If there's any other questions or comments, there is a motion and a second.
Well, we need to know why. Nobody will tell us who decided this. It could be one person. It could be two. We don't know.
So, Counselor, you're out of order right now. There's a motion and a second. We're not going to have that answered. We'll have that sent to you. The departments, you were told what departments weighed in on this. But at the end of the day, if there's a project you would like to see moved forward or taken off, you can certainly make that amendment. Seeing no amendments, I'll ask for a vote.
I do make an amendment.
Okay, so as a motion and a second, I called for the vote. And can you please lock out Counselor Oliver? He has left the meeting. So I'm going to ask you to vote, Counselor Springsteen. Somebody do that, please. Thank you. All right. That passes, uh, I have mayors. Okay. Okay, now, there we go. All right, that passes seven ayes, two nays. The nays being Counselors Jansen and Springsteen. Thank you very much. Certainly appreciate your time and presentation. All right, moving on. So these next two will be for our friends who've been waiting here for quite some time. This is the Consent Agenda. The use of the Consent Agenda has been made to expiate Council action. It contains both resolutions and first reading ordinances. Resolutions are items of routine nature. Members of the public will have an opportunity in a moment to comment on any of the proposed resolutions. First reading ordinances appear on the agenda only for the purpose of setting future public hearing dates and ordering the newspaper publication of the proposed ordinance. No public comments will be heard this evening on first reading ordinances. The public will have the opportunity to comment on the proposed ordinances during the scheduled public hearings on the date set tonight by City Council. Any council members may request an item on the consent agenda be removed for separate discussion and action under general business. Will the clerk please read the consent agenda into the record?
The consent agenda includes items nine through 12. Item nine, Resolution 2023-30, approving award of funds under 2023 Lakewood Youth Programs Grant. Item 10, Resolution 2023-31, approving award of funds under 2023 Lakewood Community Grant Program. Item 11, Resolution 2023-32, accepting designation pursuant to Section 32-1-204.7 CRS as the approving authority for the Bondview Water and Sanitation District. Item 12, approving minutes of the City Council meetings. City Council regular meeting February 13, 2023. City Council special meetings, March 6, 2023, March 13, 2023, and May 8, 2023.
All right. I'll now open the public hearing on these resolutions, so I will go back. Mr. Georgopoulos, you are first. I don't think we have any staff presentations on these. They are on Lakewood Speaks. So if you didn't have a chance, they're on Lakewood Speaks. So Mr. Georgopoulos, then Ms. Moore, then Ms. Fisher, Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Deary, Ms. Brier, and we'll keep on going down. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I appreciate you allowing me time to speak. I'm Dan Georgopoulos. I have the privilege of being the founder and CEO of Hands of the Carpenter, a local nonprofit organization that is highly focused on solving the transportation issue that single mothers face as they're trying to provide for their kids opportunity for themselves to work, to get their kids to school, to get their kids to youth programs, to get their kids to the doctors. And Hands is celebrating our 20th year this year. And my full reason for being here is just to acknowledge and express my gratitude for Lakewood, for our partnership with Lakewood. As a kid growing up here, I appreciate that partnership. I appreciate being able to be in a position to serve the single moms that are in Lakewood and provide an opportunity that doesn't exist to all. I also appreciate the acknowledgement that transportation not only serves the mom as she's raising her kids, but also the kids having the opportunity to get to school every day, to get to activities, to be seen at the doctor, and so forth. And so it's an often overlooked small detail that not everybody sees as a significant issue. But when a mom has one car and few resources, and that car goes down, there's no one else here that can take care of them the way we can. We'll serve 565 women 3.5 times each this year and provide that opportunity for them. And in part, that's because of our partnership with Lakewood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Moore?
I'm the-
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and Council. I come with a heart of gratitude. You have been so faithful over the years since 2017, when we started to be so generous to help with our mobile pantry. We have 24 schools that we help and five Metro West housing facilities, and we are so grateful to get to speak to you today. We help from head start to elementary school to middle schools to high school. And I just wanted to share a recent story. I was at a Kiwanis meeting, and one of the counselors at McLean High School had to say, you know, one of the, one of the, one of the girls that I counsel hadn't come to school for three days. And so I was in touch with her to find out, you know, to help her get to school. She says, I haven't eaten anything in three days, but I remembered from talking to you that there's a pantry at McLean, and so I came to school so I could eat. So the, you know, there's a lot of stories that are hard. I want to give a good story, too, though, of course. One of our volunteer leaders had her Jeffco Eats shirt on, King Supers. So a lady walks up to her and says, oh, my gosh, you're with Jeffco Eats. Do you know that your organization for a whole year saved our life because during COVID, we just didn't have enough food? But she said, the good news is we're back on our feet, but you helped us to stay on our feet. The other good news for Jeffco Eats is that we actually have two part-time employees. Hallelujah, I'm so happy, because I've been the only staff person since 2017. So we, you know, we're just grateful for all kinds of support. And I have some fun news, good news for this summer. We're going to help the libraries. They actually want to do a summer program with us with the Lunchbox Express with the Jewish Family Services. We're going to collaborate together, but they hope that they can actually put pantries into the library, because they already do a whole bunch of things, and it was just so cool. We're going to help four new churches. They're going to hand out foods on Sunday mornings, which I'm excited about. The Lakewood Links Rec Center is going to work with us again, and they're just, you know, wonderful. And, yeah, so we're, we're making some progress, and we're deeply grateful for each one of you. And thank you for the hard work that you do. Just honor you so much. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Fisher, come on, all three of you, come on down.
Welcome. Hi, I'm Tammy Fisher, founder of Brown Bag Ministries, and thank you. Thank you for all that you have done. We are a mobile free grocery, and we serve senior citizens, veterans, low-income housing, and families in transition, which are our motels. And a branch of our ministry is the heartbeat, which is the kids. And so that's why we're here tonight. You have been so good to us, because every year, the city of Lakewood gives us pool passes so I can get the kids out of the motels to go swimming. So when this came up, I was like, oh, you've got to be kidding. What do we want to do? Like, so I pick up children in different, in all the different motels, different age range. We do different day trips. We have our littles, we have our original tribe, and then we have our newest kids. This funding is going to take us places like Colorado has, that these kids have never seen, like mountains, Dinosaur Ridge, Elitches, which they think is Disney World. And we drive by it every time I pick up. Ms. Tammy, and I'm like, one day, guys, one day. And then this came. So you are going to open up doors and give these kids something that, that is not possible without. So for that, Louis, he is our, he's our longest and our adult. He's going to be our spokesperson. Come on, just-
All right. Louis, welcome. We're thrilled to have you.
Say thanks. Come on.
Thank you.
So I appreciate you. Thank you. And Brian, if you want to say something?
Brian, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and Council. I just came in support of Ms. Fisher.
I just came in support of Ms. Fisher. Some of you know me, Ms. Vincent, we're down there in the concrete jungle on Kofax, the King's Rest Apartments. She came into my life about a year and a half ago when one of the other places was closed down. She's been a blessing in my life and I do what I do for her because what she does for Louis and the other people. She runs a mobile food pantry, she blesses us once a month. We do pantry over at Mount Air Church every Saturday. She just does so much and the, the grant is just going to go so far with this lady. She's very frugal, she's a good shopper, and she does so much for the kids, you know. So I'm going to wrap it up and that's all I wanted to say and thank you, good seeing you all.
Thank you. Pam? And then up after that, I have Ms. Kimball. And then, is it Ms. Geek? And Ms. Figueroa? Then Ms. Beltran? Hi.
Good evening.
Let's get your times, there we go.
Oh, sorry.
All right, you're good.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council members. I'm also here to share appreciation. I wanted to first appreciate those who've already gone before me and spoken. As they have talked about their programs, it speaks to the immense needs in our community and the need for all of us to work together and to collaborate to meet those needs. I'm here on behalf of the Action Center, my name's Pam Breyer, I'm the executive director. It's my true honor to be the executive director of the Action Center, which has been serving Jefferson County for 55 years, yeah, 55 years. And we couldn't do what we do without the support of Lakewood. This particular grant is supporting food, should you pass it this evening, supports our food that is our shelf-stable food, which surprisingly is the hardest to come by. We have partnerships with groceries and we have partnership with Food Bank of the Rockies and we get a lot of free food, free fresh produce from those sources and purchase some from Food Bank of the Rockies and other distributors to make sure we have fresh wholesome food to provide to the over 200 households that are coming to the Action Center for food support every day at this point in time. What's harder to keep on the shelves are those staples, those things like cereal, those things like milk, some of those things like macaroni, the things that all families need to sort of spread the amount of food on their tables and they need it week in and week out. And those are expensive and they're harder to keep. We rely on donations from community members driving up to our dock to stock those shelves, but this allows us to make sure that we can spread that along with the food that came in through Stamp Out Hunger recently. So we're incredibly grateful for this help in addition to the other kinds of help, special help that Lakewood was able to offer during COVID that allowed us to meet rent assistance need. Lakewood also helped us to establish an emergency bill pay program, which helps people in the community with those things, those odds and ends bills that can really throw a family off. So for example, a flat tire on a car that they can't afford to fix, which could lead to them not being able to get to work or lead to unemployment or lead to not being able to get kids to school, as our Hands of the Carpenter partner so nicely shared. But emergency bill pay for all kinds of things. So Lakewood has just been incredibly supportive of the Action Center for so long and we are so grateful and I just wanted to express my appreciation for the ongoing support. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kimball?
Good evening, Mayor Paul, council members. My name is Allison Kimball and I'm the Director of Philanthropy at CASA of Jefferson and Gilpin Counties. And like those before me, I just came to express gratitude for considering CASA as part of your community grants program. CASA stands for Court Apportant Special Advocates and we advocate for children who are in the court system for abuse and neglect. And your support, if you approve it tonight, will help us recruit, train, and support more volunteers to advocate for more children and be the eyes and ears for the judge to help us find a safe, permanent home for all the children that need it. And so I just, on behalf of CASA and our volunteers and the kids, I just want to say thank you for your continued and longtime support of our program as we advocate for some of Lakewood's most vulnerable children. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So Ms. Geek, is that right? Here we go, good evening. Welcome.
Thank you.
Lady Breyer?
Hi, I'm Justin Geek, I'm the president of Alameda Youth Sports. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is a special opportunity, we're super, super grateful to be here. Our organization is a volunteer-based, youth baseball organization. We've been around since the late 40s, so almost 75 years now, serving the Alameda area. These funds are going to help the kids that in our area, excuse me, typically have financial hardships. So this is, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity and we're going to use the funds the best we can to get as many kids out there to have fun and play baseball and put smiles on their faces, so thank you very much.
Who's our special guest? You want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, well, welcome, thank you.
Thank you very much.
There we go. Ms. Figueroa? And Ms. Beltran? Then Ms. Lepenheimer? And then Mr. Lopp? Welcome.
Thank you and thank you all for allowing us all to be here today. My name is Selena Figueroa and I am with Girl Scouts of Colorado. And I am here because while we have been in Lakewood as long as we've been in Colorado, I think this is going to be our first partnership potentially with the city of Lakewood. We are incredibly grateful for any and all support. As you all know, May is Mental Health Month and Girl Scouts and our Girl Scout programming understands the importance of how we can take that, take our four program pillars, including life skills, that embodies all of that sisterhood of support programming that we're able to provide, and really bring it and tailor it to Lakewood to make sure that it's intentional, that it's inclusive, and that we're able to access and build more bridges. So these funds will support three big programs, one of which is starter troops that would be fantastic to be in schools. We know the importance of not only having volunteers and having a trusted adult in our Girl Scouts lives, but them having the support that they need to be able to pass that on to the next generation. The other two programs we're really, really excited about, that I'll just share briefly, it's a model called the Familia Camp Connection, Familia Camp Connection. And they're smaller pop-up camps because we understand that it is not just go to the outdoors, the space is there, we understand that we need to build bridges, we need to build these connections and be intentionally, again, inclusive with the families, understanding that it's not just allowing a Girl Scout to go out into the mountains, as fun as that is, that it takes time to build those connections. So starting off with smaller outdoor skills programming in their own backyard and understanding that you can have fun, it's something that's for you. And we're really, really grateful for any and all the support that you all can lend us, thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Ms. Beltran, come on down. Welcome.
Hi. I have to start by thanking you all for the walk down memory lane because I used to play Gaga Ball in summer camp. So I'm, I'm so happy to hear the youth are still at it. It's, it's a great, it's a lot of fun. So my name is Hannah Beltran, I'm with Brothers Redevelopment, we're in affordable housing on profit, but this funding, which we're really appreciative to be considered for, is specifically for our Paint-a-Thon program, which paints the homes of low-income, older and/or folks who experience a disability within the Lakewood community. And it's really, if you haven't participated in a Paint-a-Thon program before as a volunteer, it's a truly inspirational day where you're, you're showing the older adults in your neighborhoods and folks who don't always have the means with which to maintain their homes, that they matter and that you care about them and that you want that, that they, they are an investment. Their, their properties are as much of an investment in maintaining their, within the communities as, as anybody else is. So I, we're so thankful to, for, for you all to saying that older, older adults in your community are, are valued and, and that this volunteer program is, is truly one that makes a difference in the lives of older adults and those who experience disabilities. So we thank you all so much for considering us.
Great, thank you. Ms. Lepenheimer? And then Mr. Lopp? And if anybody wants to speak and hasn't had a chance to sign up in chambers, please do so, then I have some folks online, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Paul, Council. My name is Tara Lepenheimer and I'm the Director of Finance for Gold Crown Foundation here in Lakewood. And we wanted to take this opportunity to thank the city and city council, Mayor Paul, for your continued support of our foundation and the programs we operate. We are starting our 25th Year of Offering Program in Lakewood and the 20th Year of our Field House over on Harlan Street. So we just wanted to thank you and everyone for your support, we greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Hey, Council, my name's Sean Lopp, I'm here with Friends of Paha, which is a nonprofit that works with Camp Paha, a unique summer camp for youth and young adults with significant disabilities that prevent them from attending regular summer programming. Camp Paha gives them an opportunity with the assistance they need to do things like go swimming, sit at the zoo, and make friendships over the summer when that structure that school normally provides isn't there. And so we work with, Camp provides scholarships specifically for families who are otherwise unable to pay for tuition and we really appreciate your consideration this evening.
Great, thank you. All right, anybody else in chambers? Yes, sir, please come on down and if you give us your, your name and ward or organization for the record, that'd be great. Welcome.
My name's Brian Martin, I'm the executive director of the Outdoor Lab Foundation. And I'll just be very quick because I had a great opportunity a few months ago to come here and present to you all, again echoing many of the comments from the others, extremely grateful for the longstanding support that the city's provided to the Outdoor Lab Foundation and to the Outdoor Lab program. This year, we're going to be able to provide just over 5,000 sixth graders the opportunity to attend a week-long residential camp up in the mountains, either at our Mount Evans or our Windy Peak camps. The funding that is being, that was submitted for your consideration tonight is to specifically support over 500 Lakewood area students who qualify for free and reduced lunch so that we can afford and pay for their, those students' tuitions. Again, Outdoor Lab is a wonderful rite of passage for so many young people growing up in the Lakewood community and the foundation's dedicated to making sure that that experience is sustained and enhanced and as impactful as ever for, for the kids that are growing up around here. So again, thank you so much for the support, very, very grateful for everything you've provided to us so far.
Very cool, thanks. All right, so we'll go ahead and go online, I have one hand up and that's going to be phone number ending in 3074, this is to speak on the consent agenda this evening. So if you give us your name and address or name and organization or ward, we'll get you started.
Hi, my name's Liz Black and I'm just calling in from 40 West Arts in Ward Two. And I just wanted to extend a huge thank you to you, Mayor, and to city council in representation of consideration for this grant. Wow, we're amongst so many other incredible organizations. And 40 West Arts, we truly consider ourselves a city of Lakewood amenity. Everything we do is free of charge and open to our community and to the public. And so this grant is really going to allow us to expand and extend our youth programming in particular. We're really excited to partner with tons of arts organizations, with Rocky Mountain College of Art and Design and others on this grant opportunity and we're just really, really thankful for the consideration. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, I'm going to close public comment, I'll ask for a motion, then we'll have some comments, questions.
Motion.
Please, for the consent.
Mayor Paul, I move for approval of council minutes for the adoption of all resolutions and all of which are included in the consent agenda items introduced into the record by the city clerk. Second.
Right, we have a motion, a second. I'll just quickly say, for those who, who may not be aware, we're approving two resolutions, these grant funds that you're hearing about. One is our new 2023 Lakewood Youth Program Grant, and I want to thank our city staff. And this actually originated with the sale of the Denver Broncos, who hopefully are going to be a lot better going forward here in the future. But what a, what a great, Bernie, it's like, please, what a great legacy for our community. And we already sent a first chunk to the Boys and Girls Club and hopefully this will be a revolving fund to go forward and give you just a little flavor of where these dollars are going if approved. And they have to be geared towards youth, youth activities. 40 West Arts, 60,000, Outdoor Lab, 25,000, Jeffco Eats, 20,000, Gold Crown, 75,000, Girl Scouts of Colorado, 15, Friends of Paha, 25,000, Hands of the Carpenter, 20,000, Alameda Youth Sports, 20,000, even though I played for Green Mountain, Youth Scene, 30,000, and Brown Bag Ministries, 10,000. So super meaningful dollars in that program. And then I'll turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem Strom to talk about the other program.
Thank you. I had the honor of sitting actually in, on the selection committee for the Lakewood Community Grant Program. The Lakewood Community Grant Program is not as geared towards children, but we have a lot of community partners that we were able to support. This is a grant program that makes up $100,000 that we were able to divide out to a number of our organizations that are providing valuable services for our residents. The, the community grant program we actually have on the docket for approval tonight by council is $3,500 going to 40 West Arts District, 6,000 to archway communities, 2,000 to benefits in action, 5,000 to Brothers Redevelopment, 4,000 to CASA of Jefferson and Gilpin Counties, 7,000 to Catholic charities and community services of the Arch Diocese of Denver, 6,500 to Family Tree, 3,500 to Gigi's Playhouse, 5,000 to Gold Crown Foundation, 7,000 to Hands of the Carpenter, $7,000 to Jeffco Eats, $4,000 to the Jefferson County Library Foundation, 3,500 to Just Living Recovery, $5,000 to the Lakewood Symphony Orchestra, 10,000 to our Outdoor Lab Foundation, 6,000 to Ralston House, 2,500 to Sprout City Farms, and 12,500 to the Action Center. And as being someone on the selection committee, you know, many of you guys have come forward tonight with gratitude for the city and supporting you with the dollars, but I just want to say, you know, you help us in infinite ways, supporting our residents in ways that we cannot do, especially for our children right now, as we were just talking earlier tonight about mental health and wanting to support our residents and remove the stigma. We have children coming out of COVID that have, they're stuck on their iPhones and their iPads and they're socially isolated and there's so many reasons that we need to do things to help them be healthy. And so what a better time, we couldn't have a better time to have a grant supporting activities for kids. So I know that's a little off-topic for mine, but thank you to all that you guys do, you inspire us in our work every day and you inspire people you don't even know. So thank you.
Well said, thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. Ask that you please cast your votes. All right, and, there we go. That passes, nine ayes, zero nays. So congratulations to everyone, thank you for coming out and doing all that you do. All right, will the clerk please read item 13?
Public hearing on item 13, Stevenson Annexations numbers 22 and 23, annexation eligibility hearing, case AX-21-001-14700, West 7th Avenue, and resolution 2023-33, making certain findings of fact regarding the proposed annexations of certain property to be known as the Stevenson Annexations, number 22 and 23, located in the county of Jefferson, state of Colorado.
All right, I'll now open the public hearing on item 13, resolution 2023-33. We do have a staff presentation, I'll ask Mr. Goldstein to introduce our team tonight and then we'll go into public comment if there is any, and then council discussion.
Good evening, Mayor Paul, Council. My name is Bria Pafford and I will be presenting tonight for staff on case AX-21001, also known as the Stephenson's Annexation Number 22 and 23. And this is being tracked under case address 1470- 22 and 23. And this is being tracked under Case Address 14700, West 7th Avenue. So for tonight's public hearing, we're talking about information on annexation eligibility pursuant to Colorado Municipal Act of 1965. And on March 31, 2023, the city clerk received an annexation petition submitted by Kent Stevenson, President, President of Automotive Services, Inc. The applicant is requesting annexation of two areas of land that are approximately 15.5 acres in size and generally located north of West 6th Avenue and east of Denver West Colorado Mills Boulevard. And if we zoom into the annexation area just a little bit, you can see the .5 acre annexation, Number 22, along with the 15 acre area known as Stevenson's Annexation Number 23. Now, as we discussed at our last meeting for the annexation petition, this application is actually part of a larger phase development proposal located along the Denver West Colorado Mills corridor, and this time between 6th Avenue and West Colfax Avenues. The phased proposal includes the Stevenson Denver West Automotive Campus on the east side, as you can see there on the slide, and then redevelopment of the west side, once the existing Chevy and Lexus dealerships move to their new home at the Automotive Campus. Combined, the phased proposal includes six formal land development applications that require City Council approval, and this includes annexation, a couple of zoning requests, a couple of vesting requests, as well as a right-of-way vacation. As we previously discussed, the process, the process to annex unincorporated land into a municipal boundary is outlined in Title 31 of the Colorado Revised Statutes. Lakewood City Charter also requires the Planning Commission to review and make recommendations to City Council on land use matters, which includes annexation and zoning. And then the initial zoning process for newly annexed land is defined in Article 2 of the Lakewood Zoning Ordinance. On this slide, we list the steps required in the annexation and zoning process pursuant to Colorado Revised Statutes. The annexation process starts when a petition is filed by the applicant, and then referred to the governing body to initiate the formal public process. The annexation public hearing and adoptions of finding a fact resolution, which is what you'll consider tonight, is the second act, action to be considered by City Council, and this is a required step for the annexation to proceed. There's a total of five public meetings that are required with annexation. The annexation hearing before Lakewood City Council, this is our second meeting, and following this meeting, the annexation and zoning applications will be referred to the Planning Commission, and then that'll come back to you with a recommendation. We'll have a first reading for all of the ordinances that will be considered, and then a final public hearing for the initial zoning, vesting, and right-of-way vacation, along with action on all ordinances and resolutions at the last meeting. The city's intent to annex unincorporated land was properly noticed pursuant to Colorado Revised Statutes. The annexation petition, the intent to annex resolution, as well as the public hearing date and time, were published in Denver Post Yahoo section once a week for four consecutive weeks. A written notice was provided via certified mail to the county as well as all special districts. And then because the annexation exceeds 10 acres in size, an annexation impact report was prepared and filed with the Jefferson County Board of County Commissioners. Colorado Revised Statutes require the governing body to hold a public hearing on annexation within a 30- to 60-day timeframe from the adoption of the intent to annex resolution that was adopted by City Council on April 10. Following the public hearing tonight, City Council shall set forth its findings of fact to determine if the proposed annexation complies with, one, the eligibility requirements, and, two, the limitation requirements pursuant to Colorado Revised Statutes. This will be done through the adoption of a resolution. To be eligible for annexation, the annexation area boundary must be contiguous with the Lakewood Municipal Boundary for at least 1/6 or 17% of the annexation boundary. So you're looking at the perimeter of the annexation area. The boundary areas highlighted in yellow on this slide are those that are contiguous with the Lakewood Boundary. And in both cases, for the, the larger area, the, the dimensional requirement of 50% is being satisfied, and for the smaller area, we're looking at 96% of that .5 acre area being directly adjacent to a Lakewood Boundary. Now, eligibility also requires that there's a community interest, and that the area either is urban or will be urbanized in the near future, and that the lake, that land area is capable of being integrated into the municipality. State statutes consider a community of interest to be satisfied when the annexation area meets that 1/6 contingency requirement. The annexation area is adjacent to existing residential and commercial developments that is already urbanized. It's located within existing utility and service district boundaries, and it contains an extensive street network for access to the site. Staff finds that the area is capable of being integrated into the City of Lakewood with minimal to no impact on city resources and services. The area to be annexed into the city is subject to limitation requirements of Colorado Revised Statutes. First, the land cannot be divided into separate tracts without consent of the landowner. The annexation cannot result in the detachment from or the attachment to another school district. Annexation cannot proceed if another municipality has already commenced annexation proceedings. The annexation cannot extend the municipal boundary by more than three miles in any one direction. Where streets are being annexed, the entire width of the street needs to be annexed, not just pieces and parts. And then reasonable access shall not be denied to those unincorporated land areas that are taking access off of streets that are going to be annexed into the city. Staff has evaluated the annexation for compliance with those limitations, and we find that the annexation boundary follows the existing parcel boundaries and will not result in the division of an existing parcel of land. The annexation will remain in the existing Jefferson County School District Boundary. No other incorporated municipality has commenced annexation proceedings related to this specific annexation petition. The annex areas are well within the existing three-mile area boundary, and the streets and public rightaways adjacent to the annexed area are being annexed into the city as a whole, as part of this proposal. Any remaining unincorporated property that is already taking access from any of those streets that are in the annexation area, they'll continue to main access as they do today. City staff finds that the proposed annexation is in compliance with the eligibility and limitation sections of the Colorado Revised Statutes, and we recommend that City Council adopt the findings of fact resolution. Thank you. This concludes staff's presentation for the Annexation Eligibility Public Hearing, AX-21001. Before I take a seat, I would like to introduce the applicant, Kent Stevenson. He's joined tonight by Greg and Brian Stevenson, and a few other members of their team, and they are prepared to give a presentation regarding their annexation request. I'll take a seat and be available for any questions following public comment.
Great. Ms. Pafford, thank you very much. Be seeing a lot of you in the next few months.
Keep meeting under these.
And can we get the, there we go. Which Stevenson is going to join us this evening? Looks like Greg Stevenson is leading the charge. Welcome.
Well, thank you very much. I have nothing to say. She did such a great job. The, thank you for the time this evening, and I'm here really for, for any questions. As she mentioned, this is our 22nd and 23rd annexation. We're getting the hang of it finally. We started back in 1994 and brought in a sizable portion of the Denver West Development. We're not done yet. One of the things we're excited about is this is a, brings a gateway off of 6th Avenue to the City of Lakewood, which is very, very important to us. We, with our, one of our earlier annexations, we have the, the diamond interchange there at Denver West Boulevard. And so it's just another access point to the City of Lakewood. And obviously, what we're proposing tonight, I think, just continues with our master plan of what we've tried to do the last, well, it's been, it's been over 50 years now. And so we're going to keep moving forward. And again, I, I've got some things I can show you, but I don't think it's worth it. I think she just did a great job.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. There may be some questions. We're going to go ahead and go to public comment.
Thank you very much.
Yep, appreciate it. So anybody in chambers, doesn't look like anybody wishes to speak, so we'll close that down. And then I do have a hand up in, online. Looks like Ludmilla, if you want to address item 13, which is Resolution 2023-33. If you give us your address or ward, we'll get you three minutes going. You are on mute, so if you want to unmute yourself. Okay, Ludmilla? You are in and unmuted. Nope, maybe not. So, Ludmilla? If you could unmute? Going once. Going twice. Okay. So, it doesn't look like they're able to get through, so we will now, is there anybody else online that wishes to engage on this topic? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment. I will ask for a motion. Please.
Mayor Paul, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2023-33. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All right, please cast your votes. All right, and that passes nine ayes, zero nays. Thank you very much. Ms. Pafford, thank you. Thank you to the legal team as well. I'll make that a requirement. Will the clerk please read item 14?
Public hearing on item 14, Ordinance O-2023-23, repealing and reenacting Chapter 9.32 of Title IX of the Lakewood Municipal Code pertaining to parks, recreation, and arts.
I'll now open the public hearing on Ordinance 2023-23. There was a staff presentation on Lakewood Speaks, and we do have Ms. Newland here if there are questions. Although, are you doing a presentation? Okay, you're here for, great. Nobody here in here wants to speak. Anybody online wish to speak on this 2023-23? All right, seeing none, I'll ask. Let's do a motion, then we'll go to questions and comments.
I move for the adoption of Ordinance O-2023-23. Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Counselor Maia Guerrero.
Thank you. I flagged this the last time during the first reading, when I pulled this item off of the consent agenda, that I have some hesitation and concerns about Section 9.32.250, which in the redlined version online is, starts on page 12 and moves into page 13, so it's easier for you all to find it. And my concern here is it's really working to simply clarify, and my understanding is really specifically due to needing more tools of enforcement at Bear Creek Lake State, or at Bear Creek Lake Park, which is something that I can definitely sympathize with. So it is clarifying some of our rules around camping. But given that emergency shelters, including the potential for managed outdoor spaces, pallet shelters, et cetera, are things that we have already run up against, some issues with the code, which we have been able to resolve and think through, I want to recognize that while the rest of all of the redline, at least as I read it, feels very straightforward without, you know, a lot of potential for unintended consequences, but this part in particular, I worry that we're potentially setting up a bureaucratic trap for ourself, ourselves, if we look at some of those other types of programs in the near future. Not saying that we absolutely will, but just wanting to make sure that we have as much room for creative problem solving as we can. So I have had some discussions, and I really appreciate the willingness of staff to have this talk with me, because my original, my original solution was essentially just to strike this redline at, for, either for now, or postpone just that part of the redline until a date certain, without trying to hold up the rest of this process. But it seems to be in everybody's interest if we can leave most of it, and I would instead move to add, and I'll, I'll do an official motion, I just wanted everyone to have the context, but I would, I will instead move to add under Section B, so 9.32.250 subsection B, to read restrictions on camping at Bear Creek Lake Park as allowed by permit or director approval, just to make sure that this particular subsection is really only referring to that. I am also going to put forward an amendment to strike then the subsection 5 from that component, which I think should be two discreet votes, given that they're very different issues.
Okay.
So, if there's, if there's questions on that, or should I just go ahead and make the motion?
Why don't we make the motion into, put the motion into the record, and we'll get a motion, see if we get a second, then we can have any kind of discussion.
Okay, great. Thank you for the process. So I will move to amend the redline under Section 9.32.250 subsection B to read restrictions on camping at Bear Creek Lake Park where allowed by permit or director approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, please cast your votes on that amendment only. Okay, and that passes eight ayes, one nay. Counselor Maia Guerrero, your second one. The Navy and Counselor Springsteen.
Yes, thank you. So this other component is just subsection under B, Number 5, that reads, currently, it is unlawful for any person to camp in any park for more than 14 nights in any 30-day period. I imagine that having all of this additional oversight with permits specifically will give us the tools that we need to enforce. And again, that for me feels something that is creeping into other spaces, and so I'm going to move to just strike that from the redline, recognizing that it is a very discrete issue from what we just discussed. So with that, I move to amend Section 9.32.250 of the redline subsection B 5, to remove Number 5, and for it to move, for 6 to be renumbered, for 6 down to be renumbered accordingly.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I have just one thing on this. I understand where I think you're going, however, twofold. Because this pertains strictly to Bear Creek Lake Park, I think that we have such limited space at Bear Creek Lake Park, and it's an amenity that a lot of folks would like to go and enjoy, that it's reasonable to put some time restrictions on people being able to camp in that particular area, because again, you already highlighted above that this just pertains to the park, and having to manage that, you could essentially have somebody who could camp there for ever. So I wouldn't be supporting that amendment, and I don't know of a friendly one that could get somewhere at this time. So Mayor Pro Tem Strom?
I had a question for Director Newland on what kind of unintended consequences there might be with not having that particular line included?
I, I don't believe that there's a huge impact. I, I'm thinking that, I'm just thinking out loud, that that might be something we could enforce through our rules. We can put it in our rental policies when we rent out sites or permit sites, so I'm not terribly concerned about that. We can put it in our rental policies when we rent out sites or permit sites, so I'm not terribly concerned about that. Or we could reword it potentially at Bear Creek Lake Park. The limit to camping is 14 days or something along those lines.
That just passed did clarify that, because this goes underneath what just passed.
Right, right. But the way that the number five is worded, it says at any park, so I could see where somebody might interpret it differently.
Counselor Maia Guerrero.
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let us vote on what I've proposed at this time. I think for me, this is not going to inhibit the ability for the parks to create the policies that they need to. It is just a matter of it being then within an ordinance that we may have to unwind. So that is, that is my main concern, and I think that if there's different interpretations happening, I don't feel deeply offended by that. I think the one that clarifies where it is at the top of the subsection is the most important. But again, I'm not trying to, you know, hamstring, I just recognize that these are the types of clauses that end up coming into play as you have other discussions, and I want to make sure that I have as legally open possibilities as we problem solve for this moment in time.
Can I ask a follow-up though on that? I don't underst, I just don't understand though, because we just directly changed what's above it to say Bear Creek Lake Park, which then, if we pass that amendment, we're taking away that ability, unless I'm reading this all wrong, to be able to limit from 14 to 30 days. So I guess if that's not a concern, I mean, it landed in here somehow, because it was a concern.
It, it, it sounds like the, the reason it landed in here is because it follows state regulations that camping is only allowed in state parks for 14 days. And Bear Creek Lake Park is often compared to state parks, it, it acts like a state park. And so I think the staff, it's easier for them, it's a best practice to stick with the 14-day rule.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Sherazai.
I'm on the Bear Creek website, it's already part of your rules and regulations, so this seems like redundant. And I, I do think that the point that Counselor Maia Guerrero was making, that this should be, you know, part of that process, like, you know, there's glass, there's alcohol, there's all sorts of things that are covered in this. And as it states now, there's a 14-night maximum stay limit in any 30-day period, so I think that covers what we were hoping to do anyways, and it's specific to Bear Creek. So I, I would stand behind my second on this amendment.
Counselor Jansen.
Thank you. So I wonder if the one word in here is any park, where it says, "It's unlawful for any person to camp in any park." What if we took out any park and put Bear Creek Lake Park, Bear Creek Lake Park for more than 14 nights? Or do we allow parking and, or camping in any other park?
We do not. Well, we do, we, we have camping in other parks, but it's not allowed. But it happens.
Yeah, it happens. I know, it happens.
Everybody knows.
What if we just change it to Bear Creek Park? Because I know when you say Bear Creek Park up above, but it says any park. What if you just take out any park? Or Bear Creek? I thought?
I, if I may.
Please go ahead.
Counselor Jansen, I think that that is a wonderful suggestion. I will have us vote on my amendment as I have proposed it so far. Again, it feels redundant, and it is already able to be the policy, and I think that it is not in our interest to overcomplicate ordinances when we know that the policies are able to be written and enforced by the parks as it currently is, when we're just talking about these things. So if this fails, and then we're able to take another, take another go at it, then that, I think, would be an excellent place to get to.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So Mayor Protem, was that residual light on?
I'd just like to check my understanding.
Okay.
This is something that can be enforceable, it does not need to be in an ordinance. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is again, a motion and a second, strictly on this amendment. Please cast your votes. And that, somebody else has to vote, sorry. And that passes five aye, four nay, the nays being Paul, Jansen, Springsteen, and Abel. Okay, are there any other amendments or questions on this? Okay, so we have a, restate the motion as amended, so if I could ask you to make a motion to approve Ordinance 2023-23 as amended.
I move for the adoption of Ordinance O-2023-23 as amended on second and final reading.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, please cast your votes. That passes eight ayes, one nay, the nay being Counselor Springsteen. Thank you. Nice work. I know that was a lot of work for very little time, so thank you. Thanks, Jeflin. Just announce it to the world. Well, if anybody wants to know the outcome of the game, just kidding, just kidding, Jeflin will let you know, in case you're wanting to watch. Counselor Sherazai will. All right, no, don't, nobody wants to know. Will the clerk please read item 15 into the record?
Item 15, public hearing on Ordinance O-2023-24, setting the salaries of municipal court judges.
All right, I'll open the public hearing on 2023-24, and I'd like to turn it over to the Chair of the Judges' Salary Committee, Counselor Charlie Abel.
Thank you, Mayor. The Salary Committee endorsed a substantial increase for the our judges. One of the main reasons is that, or at least one of the things they should be praised for, is that our court's staff has reached out to members of the community and have put into play a community court program. Sort of a portable court that meets in convenient places for those folks who need to indulge in its hearings. And our judicial staff has always been known for its compassion and its concern for our less fortunate citizens. So I would ask that council approve this recommendation, and I would like to thank our court staff for all of their service to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So I'm gonna open the public comment. Nobody in here, anybody in here that's really left? Or, or those online, she's, those online, anybody online wish to speak, please raise your hand. Okay, I'll close out, Alex for a motion, and then I have Counselor Jansen's hand up.
I move for the adoption of Ordinance O-2023-24 on second and final reading.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, Counselor Jansen.
So I had my hand up, because I just wanted to thank Kit for the redline, and I really appreciated the last ordinance, being able to read all this with the redlines and everything, so that's what I might, my hand was raised, thank you. And I just, yeah, I love our judges, thanks.
Yeah, my apologies, I was, I did not see it in time. Counselor Springsteen.
Yeah, I just, I always have to speak up for equity issues, and a year ago, I had asked for our judges to break out for me the number of arrests that we have in various ethnicities in our community. And what I found out was that we could not break that out in terms of Hispanic members of our community, which is a big deal to me in Ward Three. The reason being was that Hispanic members were grouped with white members of the community and not broken out. And the other concern was that African-American members of the community were arrested at much higher rate than their representation in living in, in this county, in this city. So those are concerns that I have, that I expressed a year ago. That has not been rectified this year in terms of data. And as far as I can see, it hasn't been rectified in terms of addressing why those numbers are askew. And so that would be my only concern about how we're addressing things in this community. I think it's not fair to just pass things through and just say, "Everybody's doing a great job, and there's no room for improvement." I am not saying that our judges don't have a hard job. They do. And I am not saying that they're not compassionate in a lot of situations. I think they are. What I am saying is, we can do better, and if we don't ever address that as a community, it will never get better. And so that is the point I'm making tonight. And I think when people go above and beyond and go the extra mile to do better, that's when they deserve a raise. All right, thanks.
Thank you. And just for clarification, I don't think we're allowed to ask for that kind of information per the federal government as to it relates to Hispanic backgrounds. I think that was from the memo that we received last year, but certain-
That's totally untrue.
Okay, so again, potentially we could have that memo resent to council, but I'm pretty sure that-
Tell your Hispanic constituents that.
Okay. Ms. McKinney Brown, can you comment on that, please?
I didn't send that memo. I'm not saying that it wasn't sent. But remember that arrests don't happen because of any direction of the municipal judges. Arrests happen because of what police do. Once an arrest happens, then cases are filed in municipal court, and it, at that point, judges play the role of arbitrator to determine if there is evidence to show that in fact, somebody committed the offense that they're accused of. So the municipal court wouldn't track arrests, that would be outside the scope of what they're doing. They might be asked to track those people that come through the municipal court, but exactly how that would happen, I have no idea. It, the, sorry, someone was in the background, but the way the federal government tracks ethnicity is white, white Hispanic, white non-Hispanic. And if we track that way, that information through the municipal court, I think it could be probably shared, but again, we'll have to look into where that information came from, Mayor.
Certainly, and it was, I think, a request for council action that came through that listed how and why we do track things, and we follow protocols that aren't ours. Mr. Goldstein.
Yeah, I do believe the report was sent. We can, we can look for that report. As Ms. McKinney Brown was stating, I think what was ultimately shared through that report is that it's not the city's data that we're tracking, it's, it's the way the federal government has broken out various ethnicities.
Yep, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on Ordinance 2023-24. Please cast your votes. And that passes AI, one nay, the nay being Counselor Springsteen. Okay. Will the clerk please read item 16 into the record?
Item 16, public hearing on Ordinance O-2023-25, endorsing the projects and project funding levels in the City of Lakewood 2023 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing on this item. And I believe we have Ms. Deetnicker who's gonna give us a presentation. All right. She's our Housing and Neighborhood Support Supervisor. And it looks like you have a presentation for items 16 and 17. Good evening.
Good evening. Amy Deetnicker, City of Lakewood Planning Department, Comprehensive Planning and Research Division. I'm here tonight to introduce the 2023 Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program. This evening, I am going to give a bit of an abbreviated presentation than what was on Lakewood Speaks, really just covering the action plan and a little less of the overview of the Community Development Block Grant Program, since you've all been here and have heard this a few times. So our Community Development Block Grant, otherwise referred to as CDBG, is administered by the U.S. Housing and Urban Development Department, or HUD, and allocated to Lakewood. HUD allocates federal funds to states, counties, and cities to spend on projects that address local housing, supportive service, and community development needs. The annual allocation amount is based on a formula derived from population, poverty rate, income, and age of housing stock. These grant funds are either used directly through city projects, or they are passed through to nonprofit organizations or housing providers that complete activities that address the needs that have been identified in the community. Lakewood has received CDBG funds since 1974, which was the first year of the program, and is allocated approximately $900,000 each year. All CDBG-funded projects have to either benefit low and moderate and low-income individuals, reduce or eliminate slum or blight, or address an urgent community need such as a natural disaster. In Lakewood, the majority of our CDBG funds benefit moderate and low-income folks. So I will now get into the action plan. Each year, Lakewood submits the annual action plan to HUD, which outlines the proposed projects and funding levels for the program year, which will run June 1st, 2023, through May 31st, 2024. Total resources for the grant this year include the grant itself, program income, which is money received from repayments from our Single Family Housing Rehab Program. We have unspent reserves from past years, which gives us just a little over $1 million this year. We have a variety of projects. Our public facility projects include the Patterson Head Start Cottage renovation. I think this will be our final year of renovating the two Patterson Head Start cottages located at 1480 South Yarrow Street. Right now, Lakewood Head Start operates out of these two very older, inefficient, and outdated structures. The space will be updated to better accommodate programming, accessibility, and early education instruction for Lakewood Head Start families and educators. Also, we will be paying for the water tap fees for the nonprofit Savio, who are developing a six-unit townhomes that will provide transitional housing for families for children in the welfare system. We will also be doing our CDBG Neighborhood Cleanup Event with our code enforcement folks. We will hold a CDBG cleanup in September for CDBG target areas located south of Sixth Avenue. This is a very popular program and a valuable resources for households to be able to recycle- to be able to recycle and get rid of debris and things that aren't typically taken with regular trash companies. Our Single Family Housing Rehab Program, through a contract with Foothills Regional Housing, which is formerly the Jefferson County Housing Authority, we provide low-interest loans and grants to low-income homeowners to provide necessary improvements to their homes so that they're able to stay in their homes longer. In addition, Brothers Redevelopment will be assisting elderly and low-income homeowners with exterior painting and minor yard work. This is the same program that was provided grant funds through our community grant program. But the good news, well, this targets a lower-income population. And so it's actually wonderful that we're able to provide different grant funding sources to reach more folks in Lakewood. So I did want to make that point. Our homeless services, this is direct service dollars that we're able to provide our Lakewood PD homeless navigators to help folks who are in transition and needing to help stabilize themselves and their families while they work alongside our navigators to find longer-term housing and supportive services. Our childcare scholarships are also a very important program for us. These are given to low-income families attending Head Start. The scholarships allow parents to remain working full-time or pursue educational opportunities while their children are in Head Start. Our Metro West Housing Solutions Self-Sufficiency Program provides services and programs to assist Metro West Housing Solution residents, learn important life skills to become self-sufficient. These funds help pay for staff that provide case management, after-school programs, nutrition classes, financial literacy, first-time homebuyer education classes, and transportation resources. And then lastly, the CDBG administration cost, it provides the salary and benefit package for 1.5 full-time employees in addition to all the programming costs that include planning, oversight, and management of the CDBG program. That concludes my presentation tonight. I'm here for questions. And I'm asking that the city council endorse the action plan this year and approve ordinance OR 2023-25. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, nicely done. Counselor Vincent?
Yes, my only question is, is where is the Savio House located?
The Lakewood Development or the organization itself? It's based in Denver, but they are expanding out into Lakewood.
That's what I need to know, is that address? You're providing six water taps for them? Where's the location?
I don't know that I have it here, but I will get that for you.
Yeah, please.
Absolutely.
Mayor Pro Tem Strom?
I likewise had a question about the Savio House. Okay. I was just curious. I don't know if this is within your purview, but I was curious if those were going to be for purchase townhomes? Do you know?
No, they're going to be used for transitional housing. So folks will move in and move out.
Okay, Counselor Springsteen?
Yeah, I was just curious about the portion for the Metro West Housing Solutions and whether they're also teaching people how to navigate when allegedly slumlords are being passed through on vouchers and people are living in slum conditions. So I'm just curious if there's some amount of guidance on that.
I really can't speak to the Metro West Housing Solutions oversight of how they handle their other properties that their vouchers are used in. So I don't have an answer for you.
Motion.
Mayor Pauli, move for the adoption of ordinance O-2023-25 on second and final reading.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. Okay. And that passes seven ayes, two nays, the nays being Jansen and Springsteen. Clerk, please read item 2023-26, please.
Item 17, Public Hearing on Ordinance O-2023-26, endorsing the substantial amendment to the City of Lakewood 2022 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program.
All right.
A very brief--
Yeah, you're good. Welcome back.
Amy Deeknicker, Comprehensive Planning and Research Division. Okay. Let's see. The presentation tonight is just an overview of the substantial amendment to our Community Development Block Grant 2022 Annual Action Plan. So in August of 2022, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, allocated an additional $36,151 in CDBG funding to Lakewood. This will increase the overall 2022 CDBG budget from $856,536 to $892,687. This type of allocation is not uncommon and typically happens if there is an error or a change in HUD's annual allocation process. When this happens, the city is required to amend their action plan and allocate the additional funds to eligible activities. These funds will be allocated to the 2022 CDBG Patterson Cottage renovation project that's currently underway. We are amending the 2022 action plan because that is the current plan that we are operating under right now for the CDBG program. And I'm asking for your approval of the ordinance. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'll open public comment. There's nobody here. And there's nobody online. So I'll close that. I'll ask for a motion.
I move for the adoption of ordinance O-2023-26 on second and final reading.
Second.
Motion and second. Any other discussion, questions, comments? Please cast your votes. And that passes seven ayes, two nays, the nays being Jansen and Springsteen.
No, she was yes.
For who?
For Springsteen.
Oh, all right. So we're going to revote? Okay, please cast your votes. Counselor Vincent, could you vote, please? Thank you. Passes eight ayes, one nay, the nay being Counselor Jansen. Okay, we'll move into general business. We have three requests for council action. Counselor Olver has left the meeting. So I have Counselors Vincent and Sherazai.
Yes, my request for council action is when we, several of us, went to the Lakewood Library and did an overview of our favorite books and got to talk to folks about something outside of political agendas. And during that time, it came up, what about one book, one Lakewood, or one Lakewood, one book? That's basically similar to something that happened in Denver previously. And it was well-received. And people seemed kind of excited about this. But what I'm really just asking for permission for is to go ahead and do some more analysis, work with the library, come back with a proposal on how that might look.
Okay. Is there any consternation with that?
I move.
Okay, all right. Go forth. Counselor Springsteen? You're on mute.
I wondered if you could just expand on what that means exactly a little?
What it is, is that-- and like I said, I have to find out some more information. But as Denver did it, they said, this is the book this year that we're going to recommend, or go out and say, this is the book we'd like to choose to read. And then they did different meetings throughout. A lot of them took place at Tattered Cover. And they just discussed the book and what it was about, what they thought about it.
Okay, Counselor Sherazai? Oh, Counselor Jansen, do you have a question on Counselor Vincent's proposal?
I do. So is that for council? Like, you want all of us to read the book? Or is this a community thing? Or I'm kind of unders--
It's a community thing.
Community thing, okay.
You can read it if you wish, or not. There will be no book report due. Counselor Mayat Gara, is this to the book? Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to add the context that I got to experience a one-town-one book when I was in high school, living in Alamosa, Colorado. It was Fahrenheit 451. We actually ended up doing a couple of others. That one happened to be led by the university rather than the library system. But it was the same idea where the libraries put it on sort of special display to let people know that this was a thing to do. The libraries and the universities helped generate like questionnaires if you wanted to host local book club-type things. And then there was a couple, like, community-hosted, university-or-library-hosted events to either discuss or do things on theme with that book. And in Alamosa's case, especially since there's like one school, it's a little bit easier to manage. The high school ended up all reading it at the same time. And then many of the intro-university classes did as well. And so it was just an opportunity for people to opt into that kind of community collaboration and community building. And so I think it's just a really fabulous idea that was so formative for me while I was growing up.
Okay, Counselor Sherazai?
Yes, thank you. So I'd like to request something that I think we're already going to do. So I recognize now, after putting this in, that on June 12th, and thanks to Counselor Abel, because his response to a community member helps me realize this, but that I'd like for us to have a longer conversation. I know that the LAC is going to come back with a presentation on safe speeds around the community. But I'll speak to what we are experiencing in Ward One, particularly around Vivian and Stobro's consolidation. And so really wanting to ensure that we have safe speeds, particularly in our residential neighborhoods, to ensure for school crossings and for many other reasons. I recognize now, though, that there is an action on June 12th. And so I'd like to ask that we just table this until that conversation.
Sounds fair to me. And then I know Counselor Olver had one, but he had to leave. And we can put that together with his-- he's got a couple other ones coming up, so we can fold that back in. With that, we'll go to council reports. And I'll start with Mayor Pro Tem Strom.
Thank you. I just wanted to do a big shout-out to a neighborhood that we have in Ward Five, the Village of McCoy Jensen, was recently invited to come and speak to their annual meeting. And one of the things we hear, or I guess I can only speak for myself, but that I hear from residents is a desire really to create more community. And it was something that really-- it showed up even today in our Imagine Tomorrow report as one of the top things that the community was looking for is more community events, more community building. And the Village of McCoy Jensen just did an amazing job. The number of residents that all worked together to pick up trash when they're going and walking during the day. They even have a couple of residents that spray weeds as they walk. They send birthday cards to each other. And it was a really fun-- just a really fun way of helping to make sure that we are socially connected with our neighbors, which as we know, you know, through national IDOL is also something that helps as a deterrent for crime. So just a big shout-out to our Ward Five community, Village of McCoy Jensen. That's all I have.
All right, Counselor Jansen? We'll stick with Ward Five.
Thank you. So I'm having problems with my voice, so I'm going to say no report right now.
Okay. Ward Four, Counselor Franks?
No report.
Okay. Ward Three, Counselor Springsteen?
Yeah, just a couple things I wanted to follow up on from this meeting. I mean, so I think it's kind of ridiculous that this council acts like we care about mental health and substance abuse issues when, you know, I've seen over and over again that people have been absolutely persecuted over those issues by members of this council. And if anybody wants to know about that, I'm glad to talk to them about that. Secondly, it's concerning to hear of Hispanic constituents being referred to as "those people." And also concerning that we can't find a way to gauge how Hispanics in this community are treated by police and by the judicial system. I know that we can. And I know that we should. And to say that there's no way to separate them out is absolutely ridiculous. Of course, we can. We can figure out if they're being treated fairly or not in our community. And then finally, you know, there's been a lot of talk about how counselors can't speak during general business anymore because I filed a notice of claim with the city. I'm going to explain to you what a notice of claim is. As written by the law firm that this city hired, I don't know how much we spent. I don't know who hired them. But they were hired to shut a bunch of us up. So under the Colorado Governmental Immunity Act, a person who asserts that they have been injured as a result of a tortious act of a governmental entity or employee must, as a jurisdictional prerequisite, file a notice of claim within 182 days of the injury. The purpose of the notice of claim is to allow a municipality to investigate and abate dangerous conditions, settle meritorious claims, and budget for potential liabilities. So what it is essentially is a chance for a municipality to do the right thing. When I filed the notice of claim, it was because I had had a death threat in my house broken into, and I wanted it investigated. I think that's reasonable. I think that's reasonable. Instead of doing that, instead of even discussing it with me, this city hired a law firm to shut me up and to shut up other people on this council. And so one of the things that people have been told is that as a result of maybe a lawsuit, there's no lawsuit. But, I mean, anybody can file a lawsuit anytime. It's ridiculous to say that there's an impending lawsuit. But the officials and employees of the City of Lakewood have told not to communicate or interact with me, except on items on the agenda. So I would say that general business is an item on the agenda. But this mayor and this city is trying to use this situation to say that we, as a council, are not permitted to speak during general business. We most certainly are because that is on the agenda. There were three items on the agenda tonight during general business we spoke about. So we most certainly are allowed to speak. And, you know, this disinformation just has to stop. The really mean-spiritedness of certain people on this council has to stop. And so I hope that cleared up a few things, and I hope that we can speak during general business from here on out, as we have not been advised that we cannot. Thanks.
Ward 2?
Sure. Okay, great, yeah, absolutely. So I first want to thank everybody who came to our special Saturday edition of the Ward meeting. We had a huge crowd, and predominantly what we spoke about is violence on Colfax near the Glens. And I want to thank the PD who were able to come and speak more specifically to a shooting incident last week, and also speak to the response and increased attention that are going to be happening in much of Ward 2, but that area particularly, in order to help in this moment. I also want to specifically say that the amount of human beings that had never come to a Ward meeting or had not been to a Ward meeting in over a year, I was delighted to see that kind of turnout, even though it was because people are upset. If you are upset, but you care enough and think that we might listen to show up and take time out of your weekend, that to me says that something's going actually right, even though you're rightfully angry about something. And I specifically also want to say that that neighborhood, a lot of those folks were from the Glens, and they were so specific that they wanted to be clear that they were not talking about people living on the streets, people in transition, general poverty, affordable housing. They were really specific about violent crime incidents being their concern, and they didn't want that to end up getting lumped in to prevent some of the other compassionate responses that we're trying to have for a community that is struggling. And that was kind of incredible to hear from those folks at a time when they're feeling really stressed out. I also want to thank folks who came out to the Colfax Marathon. I did not pass out oranges this year because 7:30, I just couldn't make happen two days in a row, but I really appreciate that Lakewood showed up, and I saw some photos and it looked beautiful. We are going to be missing a lot of city council and study sessions, city council meetings and study sessions in the summer due to summer holidays and then CML. And so I just wanted to shout out that that might mean that you, as community members, need to reach out and make sure that you are still calling and emailing us regularly and that we're not being strangers, just because our regular spaces are not quite as consistent as they tend to be. And then lastly, I just want to take a point of privilege, and I recognize that at this late hour, there are a lot less human beings listening than there were at the time that this comment was made. But during a public comment, there were children referred to as illegal aliens in our elementary schools. And I just want to say that children who are here undocumented in our school system are not here because it is their choice, they are children. It does not matter where they are from, it does not matter who their parents are, they are children, and they should be accepted into our schools and our community just as any other child would be. And it's just very important to me that we point out that kind of rhetoric as the hate speech that it is when it happens. Thank you.
My co-counselor covered 99.5% of it, so that's great. The only thing I want to say is that there were more people running down Colfax than I've ever seen. It was really great, and I found it interesting that my co-counselor said 7:30 was early because we were there at 6:15. They were already halfway through, so that's all I just want to say. Thank you. And thank you to, actually, the mayor and the police because they, we spent a great deal of Saturday together because they were at the Two Creeks meeting, and then they were at the Ward 2 meeting. So it was greatly appreciated by the members of the community.
Thank you. Ward 1?
I don't have anything to report, other than I am echoing Counselor Mayat Guerrero's, you know, "reach out tomorrow, be joining a family as they make their trek to school to understand some of the challenges facing them in that unsafe route." So, you know, over the summer months, it's going to be a little bit shaky in the consistency of meetings because there's a lot unscheduled due to holidays, so continue to reach out. And then I have to shout out Creighton Middle School in Meadowlark Park for congratulations on your neighborhood participation program. You know, excited to see Ward 1 having such a great response in that program and looking forward to continuing that work.
All right, I'll be quick. I know everybody wants to get out of here and go watch the game. It's been busy for a lot of folks up here, but I would just like to acknowledge a few events that I was able to participate in. The Police Department Awards, their annual awards ceremony is always so well-done, and to kind of get a flavor of the behind-the-scenes of things that happen in our community and our men and women who are out there every day, working to keep us safe and find innovative ways to do law enforcement was a real treat. So hats off to them. I was able to do a cool habitat build with a bunch of mayors out in Wheat Ridge on some new affordable, for-sale townhome properties, and so that was a lot of fun. And we heard a little bit about the marathon, but I'd be remiss if we didn't give a shout-out to Matty and Kathy, who do their annual cleanup every year, the week before. And many of us up here were out there at 7:30 in the morning, picking up trash, which Counselor Mayat Guerrero did make that, 7:30 a.m. And it's always a little bit interesting to see what you pick up on West Colfax and throw away. We also had the opportunity to thank our boards and commissions, and it had been a long time since we've been able to do that live, and that was a great event. So hats off to staff and all of our volunteers who work here. And Hazel Miller came out and really did a wonderful job celebrating all the folks that make our city the wonderful place it is. The Mile High Flood District just relocated the City of Lakewood. They just relocated their headquarters, so they're right up off of Union, and that's, I think, 60 to 70 new primary jobs and a great organization that deals with stormwater and floodwater throughout the metro area. So I'd like to certainly welcome them, and we will be gone for a little while. And so I'd like to wish everybody a happy Memorial Day, as we remember all those who have served and gone before us, and thank them for all that they've done. So I'll thank our police for being here tonight, and we'll adjourn this at 9:59 p.m.